All right, I'll call this Lake Mills City Council meeting to order for August 3rd, 2021. If we can have a quick roll call vote, or not a roll call vote, but a roll call attendance. Misty?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quidnow?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Great, thank you. If everyone will rise, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So correction and/or approvals of the city council minutes of July 20th, 2021. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the city council minutes from July 20th of 2021. Second.
All right, we had a motion from Mrs. Curler and second by Mrs. Quidnow. Is there any comment? All right. Seeing none, I guess we'll move that as an approval.
Would you like me to call the vote?
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, correspondence section of the meeting. Ms. Quidnow, did you have any?
I did. I have an email regarding modifying zone policy about the throat widths of driveways, as well as some telephone calls regarding that same information. And then also an email regarding whether or not the splash pad was going to happen at Wallace Park.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, I received the same email about the width of the opening for driveways. And I also received an email about the channel between the Mill Pond and Rock Lake and the condition of that, and how it's pretty unnavigable.
All right, Ms. Curler?
I received two correspondence, the same as Mrs. Bishop.
All right, Mr. Fields?
I received the same two emails also, and I also received a call by a constituent interested in what it would take to get UTVs authorized for in the city.
Can you tell me what a UTV is, please?
It's an all-train vehicle. It's like, looks like the little mini doom buggies. You'll see them around the town, most of the townships and the county around here has all approved them for the street use, except for on the highways.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and I received correspondence along many of those lines. Also, I did have the township reach out to us, an offer that council members, an opportunity to view some of the lake challenges that's going on. So you can either contact Chief Miller, or you can contact the town clerk, which is Robin Unst, to make arrangements. I guess the best viewing for that's on the weekend. So that offer's out there if anyone's interested. Also, I did attend a joint Rock Lake Committee meeting, and they are pushing forward with a 200-foot wake and taking that to the township. And I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that going on at this point, just so that you know. There won't be a vote under this, under this council, but it's something we should be aware of because it does impact our residents. And I also followed up on one of the correspondences from the last meeting, and that's dealing with the state Highway 89 and County V. And that intersection's actually maintained once a year by the county, but it's paid for by the state, and I guess that's all they authorize at this point. So I'm planning to reach out to representatives at the state to find out what we can do to maybe up that a little bit more and see if we can improve that situation, so.
Mr. Waters, thank you for following up on that, and I also did the same. So I've talked to Greg Keppel at the Jefferson County Highway Department, and he has discussed the issue with his contact at the state and indicated that the only other idea that he thought that could be pursued would be perhaps chemical treatment, and that the state might be willing to authorize the county to do a chemical treatment to minimize the weeds.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're back.
Anything else on the correspondence side?
With regard to the email that we got having to do with the driveways, is it something that we should, or I would really like the Plan Commission to take a look at that? Is that something that we need to advise them, or how does this work?
Yeah, someone from the council should sponsor something that would be reviewed at that level. It has to start at the Plan Commission. All zoning issues have to go to the Plan Commission, but a council member could sponsor an ordinance that would go forward.
Would we need to have that on a future council agenda in order to refer it to the Plan Commission?
I don't know that necessarily.
Can't hear you.
An individual council member can work with the city attorney to ask an ordinance to move forward through the Plan Commission. It'll eventually be reviewed at all levels, so it doesn't need, it can be, but it doesn't have to be.
I wonder if, it's been quite a few years since the zoning ordinance was updated. I wonder if there are other issues that, you know, perhaps could be explored rather than just looking at this one?
I'm sure there could be, but I don't know that all the issues are brought forward at this time, so. I wouldn't say what should and shouldn't be brought forward.
All right, any other questions or any other questions on that topic, or any correspondence? Seeing none, I'll move forward to item number six. Question and public comment. Since there's no public hearing today, the public is encouraged to read or to address the council at this time. Let me get my glasses. And start over. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. All right, the floor is open.
Hello, my name is Andy Tonys, and I live at 420 Fremont Street. My comment has to do with the request to amend zoning ordinance on driveway throat width. I am a husband and a father of four young children. Our family moved to Lake Mills in 2016. After extensive research, thoughtful planning, and no small degree of soul searching, we chose this city, and we hope to call it our home for the remainder of our lives. Last summer, we put our money where our heart was by purchasing an older house in our downtown that was in near total disrepair, with a dream and a plan for transforming it into our forever home. We staked our family's financial future on this investment. We have taken pride in knowing that this investment would benefit our entire community. That's how much we believe in our hometown. Renovating an older home and improving a property is a stressful process. We have accepted the unavoidable challenges. An unexpected difficulty that we did not anticipate having to face was overcoming city ordinances that place unnecessary and unreasonable hardship on property owners in our community's older neighborhoods. These ordinances do not account for construction practices and property layouts commonplace in the past, when older homes were built and neighborhoods were developed. Abiding by these ordinances imposes severe limitations on what a homeowner can do to improve their property and raises the cost of such improvements to prohibitive levels. In many circumstances, these ordinances will deter families from making our type of financial investment and personal commitment to our community. And so, I come before you to humbly request a review of those ordinances and their enforcement, eventually seeking to adopt commonplace amendments that account for unique circumstances like those frequently present in older properties downtown. Like me, I am certain that each of you wants to attract residents eager to make improvements to those properties. The vibrancy and well-being of our downtown depends on it. Therefore, it logically follows that you would promote ordinances that facilitate those improvement plans and encourage families to make investments in our community, as the Tonys family already has done. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Any questions or comment for Mr. Tony?
Turn my speaker on here. Mr. Tonys, thank you for being here. Would you be willing to address maybe any other challenges you've faced with these renovations in addition to the throat width of the driveways?
I have found city officials and like civil servants in our community to be incredibly helpful. Like, I've talked with them, they've met me, they came out to our property. I think they're doing their best to help me and my family in our situation, but they're bound to follow these ordinances. So the main one is the driveway for us, the width of that driveway, and what it prohibits us doing in accessing a garage that we had to build onto our property in place of a gravel parking lot that was there prior. So a considerable investment on our part to build a very nice garage, as well as renovating an entire home, that we can't access if we have to follow the ordinances as they're written.
Anything else? Lisa?
Mr. Tonys, again, thank you for being here. I think the correspondence that we received mentioned that you were denied a permit. So what is the current status of your project, then? Are you planning to modify your plans or appeal that? What's the current status of your construction project?
So, from my heart, right? This should be a time of total celebration for my family. We lived in 600 square feet last summer in that house. We bathed in the lake. We took swims because the showers, the plumbing didn't work. We made that commitment to this city. We're nearing completion. I can't get an appraisal on my house right now because of the ordinances. I'm having to pay money to get extensions on our construction loan so that an appraisal can happen on our property. That's costing me additional money. I'm trying to continue to work with Bank of Lake Mills here in town because I want to continue to support our community. But the most financial sense for me right now is to switch to a different institution because of the delay that is happening because of the ordinances. Again, city officials have met with me, they've been very cordial and helpful, they've tried to help me as much as possible, but right now, we can't move forward with completing our driveway until this situation is resolved.
Any other questions? Thank you, and welcome to the community, by the way, Mr. Tonys. You've done a wonderful job with that site. It just looks fantastic, and thank you for your upgrades to the city and making that property much, much nicer than it was before, so thank you.
Thank you, Greg, and all the city council members, and thank you again to the city officials who've already met with me and tried their best to help me out. I appreciate it very much.
Thanks. Is there any other speakers tonight? All right, thank you. So we'll move on to the city manager report, item number six. Mr. Wilkie?
I provided you the county's memo on redistricting. We attended a meeting today at noon to go over what the conditions are with redistricting at the county level. Misty will be enjoying the next several months, I'm sure. She's got, once the county gets done with their portion, she's got, she has 70 days, but they've asked her to do it in 45, so I'm assuming that myself, Dwayne, and the GIS specialists will probably be working through the redistricting. We want to have it in as soon as possible. We have to have everything done by November 16th, which means we have to get it back to the county, they have to get it approved, and then we have to get all the notices in the paper, and because ours is a weekly, ours is one of the more difficult ones. So we are in a race to meet statutory requirements, even though we're already six months behind schedule. So that's probably the biggest one there. Any questions? Otherwise, I have nothing else.
You should probably explain why we're behind schedule.
Normally, the census is out six months ago, but it's been delayed until probably September 1st. And the census is what all the redistricting is based on. Normally, we'd have had that in February. So it's, and normally, the federal requirements and the state requirements are laid out so that the feds say they have to have the census to us in February. Then the county has six months to do the initial one, and then we have 60 days to do ours, and then there's another 60-day timeline before it has to be published, but those are all gone. So it's a situation of, we are now trying to squish what normally would have been done in nine months down into, 10 months down into four months.
Yes, Michelle, Ms. Quidnow?
That's okay, you can call me Michelle, too. Do we have a large need for having to look at our redistricting map? I was at the meeting today, and I was wondering about that, if there were some gaps in our information, and if this would require a lot of time from our city staff, or if things are pretty okay, and we can just, you know, it's going to be okay, and I just would like to know more about that.
No, we'll be one of the ones that has the most to do. Our population numbers have changed substantially, and we've annexed a lot of properties, so we will probably be one of the ones that should be at the top of the list for getting county assistance and making sure that we know how to run the system and get the numbers adjusted. I'll guarantee you that the northeast district has seen a substantial population change, and the eastern one, and the southern one. So you'll have to, the older ones that were generally high population areas that, you know, that are densely populated and were relatively small districts will probably expand, and then the other ones will start, the numbers will start to balance out, and they'll become smaller, too. So it's a, it's a numbers game, and they're block by block. So we have to know every block, and hopefully, from what I've seen in the past when we did the last one, last, this is my third one, no, this is my fourth one. Did 90, 2000, 2010, so this will be my fourth one. The computer software now has the block, the populations per block locked right in, so the second you click on it, it tells you, and then you can get your numbers per your district right away, pretty much locked in. And so that's the key, is there's a federal requirement for how much population has to be in each district. So that's what she'll be doing. I know the last time we did, it wasn't quite as bad as 2000. There was a lot of hair pulling in 2000, but at that time, it was because of county requirements, because we were all at large. The city was at large, so there were no districts we had to, or no wards we had to worry about other than the county ones. In 2004, when we went to wards, then 2010, it made it a lot more intensive in trying to make sure they balanced. And so that'll probably be the case again as we kind of shift out and pick up the population areas.
Ms. Curler?
Thank you, Steve. I'm just curious, will there be any impacts with the revised schedule on folks who would be filing nomination papers to run for office in the spring election? Or is that schedule going to be the same as it always is?
That schedule is going to be the same as it always was. The law requires that it has to be done on November 23rd. That has to be filed with the state, always has, so that's the day we're shooting for.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, thank you. Moving forward, item number eight. Councilmember board report and acceptance of minutes for the Plan Commission of May 25th and Joint Rock Lake Committee of June 1st. Any additional reports or comment? Hearing none, I'll accept the minutes as entered. Moving on to council business. Item number A, discussion of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. This goes back to you, Steve.
Well, it really kind of doesn't, but we'll start with that, that there are a lot of options for the use of these funds that are listed, and I've provided you a lot of documents. I don't know if you've had a lot of options. Some of them probably aren't really that relevant to us, and some of the questions that have been asked are, like, we did not take, we did not take any loss in revenue. We did shift how revenue came in a little bit. We did spend a little bit more money on coronavirus items that weren't originally budgeted, but they didn't impact us. We still ended up with a surplus. So from a budget standpoint, there's not a significant reason to reimburse us as a government entity. So some of the questions come along the line of, you know, where would we spend the money? And, you know, so there's like reimbursement to businesses who lost money, paying for utilities for renters who can't pay their rent or can't pay their utilities. There are options for housing, water and sewer, parks, and those types of things. So it's kind of like, what direction do you want to head? The only one I'm going to really push hard for is the, which you'll see a lot of cities have done, is upgrading the council chambers to hold both in-person and virtual meetings so we don't have to do this anymore. I think that, in the long run, is going to become important because I think people are going to expect to have virtual meetings in the future, or at least the potential to attend our meetings virtually. And I think that'll be important. There were, you know, other items that I felt would be good ideas. I know the business one is one, but that's, you know, you'd probably kind of want to limit that. And there's also, I don't know if you read, but the whole package, SBA got a lot of money. They got a lot more money than we did, put into small businesses. That's had COVID impact, so that, you know, that might be redundant. Water and sewer is also a good area. The housing option is a good area, so we were kind of looking at a combination of that. We do have $450,000 available from TID2 for the housing project, and adding, you know, a portion of this to that would get a substantial package done for that housing project on Industrial Drive. And so those are some of the things that initially came to my mind as we popped out, but it's kind of open to you guys to see what you're thinking.
Ms. Quidnow?
So Steve, I noticed you had some suggestions, and one of them had to do with private utility payments. I'm just wondering, how much outstanding private utility payments are there currently?
Actually, we're about as good as, we're at normal. In fact, during the whole time period, we monitored it. We never got much outside of normal.
What is normal?
Well, the amount of payments that we're behind, behind. We always have a certain number of people who aren't paying their utility bills on time. There's a percentage, and we kept track of that, the amount of dollars and the percentages, and that was, it was within normal. The, in fact, you ask what's normal for us? Normal is lower than most other municipals running those types of utilities.
Are there frequent flyers in the lower utility? And if that's the case, are we doing anything with them? I mean, I know that we have a payment plan option as far as that's concerned, but if we were to use part of the money to nullify their debt, would that change their habits, do you think?
No. We've done that in the past, and we still have the same frequent flyers. It's, you know, we always kind of watch, in 2008, we got a lot of non-frequent flyers. But what I'll say, we haven't, since 2012, we've seen it go back to the frequent flyers. And even with the, we were worried substantially, that's why we monitored it during the coronavirus, and we just, we just didn't see the same thing again.
Okay.
So it, they will be on the list again, but, you know, that's an option. At least you get them caught up for a period of time.
Well, that kind of leads me to the segue of Alice Housing, and then looking at the information that was provided in the documentation, the emergency rental assistance, emergency housing vouchers, and the rural rental assistance, are those all things that play into the Alice, or is that something separate?
In our case, it's something separate. Most of those types of come from the federal government through the housing, you know, urban housing. Ours is, because if you remember going back to when we made our application, our application was so unique, they didn't know how it would work. Because we're not building apartments, we're building houses. And our goal is to move people out of apartments and into houses. And, you know, if you check at the rents, at most of our apartments are 1,200, 1,400, 1,500 for basic apartments, and if you're living in this community as an Alice, that's taking all your income. You can't ever get to the point where you can move into your own housing. So if you get enough, where, if you get a situation where you can create housing, where people can move into that housing, it opens up apartments again and probably helps control the rent. Because right now, the problem is, is that rent is skyrocketing because there's no options.
Right, is that some of the things that were available that will help with lowering the cost? Are these things that I listed, or no?
That's been my argument from the beginning, is if you want to help control rents, it's to get people out of the apartments. And get them out of the apartments, they're in a vicious cycle right now where they're spending all their money on rent and they can't get enough. And so people that are in this Alice area, and you'll find a lot of them to be police officers. of them to be police officers, firefighters, school teachers, those types of people, they're paying so much for rent that they can't get into, to housing. They can't get the down payment for housing. So this project would have done that. This would have created a situation where we could have gotten those people the financial basis to be able to borrow money. And from that standpoint, they would own their home. We wouldn't have anything else to do with it. It would be theirs. They would take care of it. They would have a five-year agreement with us on, on certain conditions that would have to be met. But after that, they make all their improvements. They sell it. It doesn't have to remain an Alice house anymore. Our, our basis would be that we would continue to build houses that we would move people into that would be Alice-worthy. But the houses that these people move into, they're off our hands. And hopefully, they develop their own equity in the system by investing in their housing and those types of things.
So how much of the, of the amount that we receive are you thinking would be good to go into the Alice housing?
Well, we need about, to get the, through the first two phases of that project, we need about eight hundred thousand dollars. And we, like I said, we have four hundred and some already. So I'm assuming that between three fifty and four fifty would get us to the point where we take off with the Alice housing. So it'd still give us a substantial amount of money to look at, you know, if we use the, I'm estimating the, I actually have three quotes that take me to about forty-two thousand dollars to redo the system in here to make us a virtual meeting. And then, you know, looking at probably a hundred, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to go into either like rental assistance or downtown business assistance, and then the rest to go to Alice housing. That was my thoughts.
I just wanted clarification. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Yes, Ms. Bishop?
Mr. Wilkie, you did mention that some funds were transitioned for COVID purposes. Do you have an estimate of what, how many, of what those funds were and what pots of money they came from?
Could you state the question again? I didn't hear the beginning.
Yeah, sorry. So you were saying that some funds last year were moved and used for COVID-related purposes. Do you have an estimate of how much money was spent for COVID-related purposes that could be reimbursable and what pots of money that came out of?
Well, the expenditures were already reimbursed through the previous grants.
Okay.
So we spent about, I'd say about ten to fifteen thousand dollars on the equipment like this, to be able to, to give meetings up and running, and then supplies for projects. We actually had a lot, I think we turned forty thousand dollars over to Fort Atkinson because we just didn't, we couldn't spend enough money. And Fort Atkinson had a couple projects that, that they needed to get done. And so we just transferred money to them. So we, we didn't, we really don't have anything that will be substantially reimbursable. Because the rest of it would be revenue, this one would be revenue-related, and we hit our revenue targets.
Ms. Curler?
So my understanding is you're looking for our ideas and our feedback tonight, right? So I've got a few thoughts, and I appreciate the ideas that you've shared. Technology improvements, I, I definitely would support that, both improving the public's access to these meetings and hopefully having, you know, better quality when they watch it later or whatever. So I think we've experienced that, and I think that would be positive. Some of the things that I think would be really positive and, and help businesses and people in our community, like support for small businesses, you know, reimbursement, maybe reimbursement for private utility payments that are in arrears. It also seems like there's other funds coming through that larger umbrella of ARP that might be addressing that. So I definitely wouldn't want us to duplicate. Like you said, I wouldn't want us to spend money on something where there's other sources. You know, let's maybe try to do something that's unique to us. And I know the county finance committee, I think, is meeting in a couple days. It'll be interesting to see what they do. But I wouldn't want to duplicate, you know, anything that the county might be doing. I like the, the housing idea. If some of the funds could be used to support affordable housing, oh, it sounds like you'd need a pretty big chunk there. Infrastructure, to me, is very appealing. But then when we, when I looked at six hundred and twenty-six thousand, and then we look at our capital improvement plan, you know, that doesn't get you very far. But if we can do, you know, things that the community can see real benefit or individuals who experienced loss revenue or challenges, if some of those people can see some benefits from the decisions that we made, I would feel really good about that. I guess if we had to hone in on something infrastructure-related, I wonder if we could use the funds to speed up getting rid of lead service lines, whether that would be, and I think Paul has a three-year plan now. Could we get that done in two years if we did a little bit of investment? So I guess those would be some of my thoughts. Can we speed up some of the priorities that we're already working on?
Well, that again depends on the infrastructure package that's going through Congress now because a very large portion of that's going to LSLs. And based on the money that we already have, will be substantially completed within two years. So if that money comes down, we'll, we'll probably have access to a lot of money that we, we could use for that. So that's another one. Based on the, the other programs that are probably coming through, that I wouldn't, I wouldn't think we need to worry a lot about that. Even now, with the way the package is, we'll be, we'll be pretty substantially complete by the time that, within three years, even two years, will be substantially complete.
Yes.
Hey, quick question. Is there a timeline of when we need to use these funds by?
Twenty-six.
Okay. Oh, I see it says to be spent in twenty twenty-five, but by twenty twenty-six? Okay. I just wanted to be clear. So we have some time?
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Bishop?
Yes. Ms. Curler actually had a couple of points that I want to speak on. The first, in terms of individual challenges for either businesses or homeowners in terms of utility payments. I think all of us had such varied challenges in the last year. It would be next to impossible to monetarily compensate somebody or to pick and choose those winners of that compensation, if you will. And so as a council, I would like us to stay away or stray from that idea. And I would like to see us use the funds for the most good for the most amount of people in the city. And I really do think that that is infrastructure. We're looking, our next agenda items are all about geo-bonds and capital improvements. And, you know, we're looking at, you know, twelve million dollars in the next five years that we're going to have to be spending to upgrade systems that are at least a hundred years old. And so what is the most good for the most people? I think it's fixing that. I'm not against fixing the infrastructure, but I think it's using the money to put towards that. And I think, you know, the almost six hundred thousand dollars we're getting total in these funds covers about half of what we would be looking at general obligation bonds for. And so that may be a purpose that we could use that money for instead of going and getting geo-bonds. So that's my position, I think, on the matter. And I'm looking forward to discussing further the capital improvement plans that we have.
Any other questions, comments here? All right. So we have a five-year period to, to spend these funds, of course. So we have a, a big window to work with. And I'm thinking that down the road here in the near future, we need to have a workshop, get, get together, discuss the different options, and get on the same page and decide as a council, what's the best way to move forward with this. Makes sense with everybody? All right. So we'll get that on the agenda soon.
I'm just interested to know, Steve or Greg, do you have any leanings or, or recommendations that you want to share with the rest of us? Or are you still digesting the options?
Do you want to go first?
Sure. I know one of the things that I'd like to kind of talk about, do a little more exploring, is we've talked about in the past, the parks. We have several parks that, smaller parks here in the city that don't have restroom facilities, or Commons Park, the, our strategic plan was upgrade the restroom and the areas down there. So that's, the whole public would benefit from that. So I wouldn't mind seeing a little bit of it go to some of that kind of infrastructure. It would help out all the citizens and just give us a little bit better draw for the community, too, for some of our events.
And I'm in agree with, with Mr. Fields. I'd like to take a look at, pull out that master plan for the city, take a look at what's, what's on the agenda for that, what, what works best for the people, and what will have the largest impact, and see how that fits with the recovery funds, see if it, if it works, fits in the, the guidelines, and help the, the largest amount of people that we can in the city with bringing recreation and, and better parks and better facilities.
Greg, could I add one more comment? Just reflecting on Catherine, what you said, I think you're right that everybody had a different experience. And I think fundamentally, I would like to recommend that whatever decisions we make, I don't want this to be so burdensome on the staff to like figure out who gets five dollars here or fifty dollars there. Then it's not really worth the six hundred and twenty-six thousand. You know, it dilutes the impact of that. So I'm definitely in agreement with you that, you know, if we can find things that are logical, that don't take a lot of time and effort for staff to figure out who should get what, that's definitely, would be a benefit for everyone. So thank you for your feedback on that.
I concur.
All right. So we'll get that on the agenda in the near future. Thank you for bringing that, bringing all that information forward. Appreciate all the information that we've received on that. And I know there's a lot to digest. And we'll, we'll continue to review more and more information as it comes through. So we'll move to item B. It's a discussion slash decision on two thousand and twenty-two capital improvement projects. So Misty, can you read the motion?
City Council Motion twenty-one dash eight dash one dash one, approval of two thousand and twenty-two capital improvement plan.
All right. So we got a lot of information there to digest. Thank you to the, the staff. Would anyone like to, to speak on, on this?
Do we need a motion?
We need a motion first.
That's right. Is there a motion?
I move to adopt the approval, the approval of the two thousand and twenty-two capital improvement plan, twenty-one dash eight dash one dash one.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. A motion by Ms. Quidnall, and a second by Ms. Curler. Now we have discussion.
We generally put together at least a five-year capital improvement plan for most projects and equipment in the city. This plan represents a plan that has continued now for about four years. It's built off of concepts of street condition, age of water and sewer, LSLs, stormwater conditions, those types of things. The plan was approved by the Public Works Board, and it basically, I guess the way I look at it, is the only thing that this really does is guarantee that next year, we're going to do Oak Street. But it does give you an idea of how the progression would be done if you continue on with the concepts that we use to determine what goes in the capital improvement plan. And all the projects are listed. So unless you have any questions, that's, I know Dwayne has a lot of information too, if you have any questions for Dwayne.
Steve, I was just going to ask, on page thirty-four, there's like a, a second skid steer that we're going to purchase for forty thousand. And it's one of the only ones where there's no description or justification. I know there's a skid steer in two thousand and twenty-two also for seventy thousand. Was there, are they going to start rotating them like on a four or five-year basis, or?
Actually, it's on a fifteen-year basis. So we have, we have two now. And they rotate through on a, on a age basis. So they do look at it, make a, try and make a determination of, of, if it can go another year or two, we may make an adjustment at that time. Right now, we're just kind of saying, normally at this time period, this piece of equipment should be replaced. So it's just a, kind of a holder to give you an idea that, based on the information that's typical, we use fleet maintenance information from the Fleet Maintenance Magazine Corporation. So we, we kind of use their time schedules. And, but when it comes time, we look at it and we make adjustments. You know, sometimes we shift. A lot of times, a truck will go or a wheel, you know, a wheel loader will go, and then you have to come back and say, no, the, the skid steer will last another year. And, but yeah, we, it's in there in the schedule. And the one that's in this year is, is definitely in need of replacement.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve, Dwayne, Paul, I just want to say thank you for all the details that you provided. I appreciated getting the information in different forms from the fifty-seven individual items, and then how they were grouped in the different reports to kind of understand by department. So that's really helpful. I think this is maybe just a clarification, Steve, but are you saying, do we adopt a capital improvement plan every year? So this is forecasting what's generally in the plan for five years, but it's not committing us necessarily. If something changes, next year, we'll be looking at another one, and that could be tweaked based on circumstances. Okay. And then as far as the costs vary year by year, and maybe this is for some of our future agenda items or future budget training, but because the capital improvement costs are so variable, do we need to use different budgeting strategies then to kind of smooth that out? Or, you know, so we're not going to be obviously changing the tax levy up and down by those amounts? We'd be looking at other sources of funding to kind of smooth out those costs?
We almost always.
Yeah, you're good.
We almost always bond.
Okay.
And that smoothes it out.
Okay.
And we look at the bond payments. So you'll notice that some bond payments are larger this year and smaller the next year. And we balance it out to try and keep the levy as flat as possible. Well, I shouldn't say the levy, the rate. So, you know, like, the last two years, we had a one-point-eight percent net new construction, and this year we'll have a three percent net new construction. So the, the assessed value increased so much that, that, that the rate will drop, even though the levy will go up slightly. So it's, it's not a, if you looked at it from that standpoint, it's how it blends across all the, the units and the structures on an assessed value basis, and it's, it's pretty flat.
Thanks.
So when we're looking at this plan, and what I think I heard the discussion between Ms. Curler and staff was, we're approving the plan to do the work and also the expenditure for next year. And if we are improve, if we are approving the expenditure, how does that fit into the budget for next year in that conversation?
Basically, what this document is, is put into the budget. So when the budget comes through, all these numbers will be in there, and they'll be detailed. So the only thing that you won't have exactly is, you'll only have an estimate of the new debt payments. But the rest of it will all be there. So we'll know how much money we're bringing in, how much money we're expending. And then we'll work from that point to have a good idea of what the debt payments will be. To a certain extent, the way we do our capital projects, our capital construction projects, we don't design them until late in the year. So when we're sitting here putting this budget together for you, these are estimates. And even then, once it's And even then, once it's designed and you get your opinion of probable cost, it still doesn't guarantee that that's going to be what the bid price is. So like this year, when we got into the actual design, we had to add additional feet to cover sanitary sewer and stormwater problems. So it came out a little bit higher than the budget, but the the actual payments are adjusted to make it so that it works fine. So it's not a it's never impacted the budget as a as a long-term item.
Do you have a follow-up, Mrs. Bishop?
I do, yes. So I just want to capture that again to make sure I fully understand. By passing this resolution, we're seeing city staff, we want you to incorporate these projects for 2022. And I'm looking at the department summary, we want you to plan for 1.8 million dollars in the budget to pay for those projects. Okay, I'm getting a north and south yes answer on that from the city manager. Okay.
It won't be, it will be that we'll borrow that much money. There's some money that comes in from other items. So it's not exactly on that course that that'll be what the debt impact is. But yes, we will borrow that much money or we will spend that much money on capital projects.
When will you need a decision on how much of that money is going to be borrowed? Like, so if we pass this now, but then there's further discussion about the geo-bonds and maybe, you know, all of that doesn't get passed tonight, how does that affect then us passing this resolution?
Well, passing this resolution just puts it in the next budget. So you get to look at it again. But based on what we have historically done, we borrow about 95 to 96% of this money.
I have another follow-up question. It's a very specific item, but I think it will lend more understanding. One of these vehicles was a, I'm going to get it wrong, but it sounded like a vacuum essentially for like sewer lines, a transport, transported water rate, and then it took the gunk out. And the quote for that was $450,000. So for an item that big, I can't imagine that, well, I would have trouble financing that with a geo-bond. And I can't imagine that there aren't companies that rent those or that there isn't some kind of plan that you could do with other municipalities to share an item like that or to contract it out to make some of that money back. So for an item like that, why do we have that there? And were other possibilities considered?
Yeah, we we have historically looked at that question. We're under requirement to do quarterly maintenance on all our sanitary sewers. So we have to be out there almost on a weekly basis doing our jetting and vacuum. So most cities are also under in this region are under the same requirements. So you're not capable of sharing that piece of equipment. This also doesn't go under a GL bond. This goes under the revenue bond for the wastewater utility. So it it comes out of that fund rather than the general fund. So yes, we tried doing that one time, didn't work. It has a lot to do, it's kind of like some of the other pieces of equipment. When everybody needs it, everybody needs it. And so it's hard to get a hold of. And then especially in this region, getting back and forth with that piece of equipment when you need it. A lot of times it's can be in the middle of the night. So those are issues that we just, if you read the EPA requirements, they highly recommend that you have a jet or vector as a part of your regular maintenance system. And we by requirement for our system, have a schedule that we have to maintain on vac jetting and vacuuming our systems.
Okay, thank you.
Catherine did a really good job with asking some of the questions that I had. So thank you for that. I have a really silly, maybe specific question, but on page 42 of the capital improvement plan with regard to East Oak Street, project number 22-01, I'm seeing something that I didn't see in other places, and that was the prior total. And I'm just curious as to what that means. Is that something that's outstanding that needs to be addressed? Or is that something that we can apply to the cost?
That was, that's going to be spent this year. So it's part of the total project cost of that project, but it's no longer in that list. It's the year before. So that list starts at 22. But actually, we're going to spend some money this fall preparing documents, get ready to do that. So there was money budgeted this year to start some of the preliminary engineering. So it's primarily surveying. They go out and they verify all the details about, you know, where the sewer is, where the water is, what are the depths, what are the pavements, what are all the grades and things along that line? But yeah, we every year, we generally sometime, as soon as it looks like that budget's going to be approved, we get a we get a survey crew out there and start surveying that site. So this year, we're going to spend a certain amount of money on that project to get information prepared. Because what we want to do is we want to have that bid out as early in '22 as possible. Because generally, if you get your bids out in late January, mid to mid February, you're going to get better bids. Once you start sliding into March, a lot of those companies have already got their bids lined up and you're no longer getting the best bid amounts.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilkie, we're all relatively new to this process, I guess. And when you look at the history for capital improvements, when I look at these amounts are roughly $2 million a year, is that what we've seen in the past? And for how long have we been looking at a $2 million bill per year?
Well, I've seen a lot more, but it's it's lumpy. So like when we built the municipal building, when we built the fire department, when we did redid the Pub Works building, those are big projects. They take a lot of money. We, since 2014, we've been doing a lot of street work. So I would say in 2014, we consistently hit, you know, the 1.6 to 2.4 million dollars in public infrastructure improvements. So and we try and balance it somewhat. So Oak Street is a small project. Lake Street was a relatively big one. There'll be a couple other relatively big ones coming up. Water utility is is the one that kind of slows our progress down. So we we try and balance out how much water we have to replace in a project to make sure that we keep our rates compatible. So what we'd look at is you have to do a certain amount of West Lake Street as a project. That it all ties together. So there's a whole stretch of street that logically tied together and you wouldn't want to do it in a different form. Reed Street got thrown in because the sanitary sewer was collapsing. And then Reed Street expanded because there were all kinds of other unusual issues in that region. Jefferson and CP got thrown in as a TID project. So that's a totally different area. So you'll see the dollars, but it comes off of a different payment schedule. Comes out of TID funds, comes out of the TID increment. It's not really a part of the general fund levy. And so it 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 looks, you know, like there's a lot of dollars being spent and but it gets shifted around between water, sewer, electric, TIDS, and the general fund. So it sometimes it's not as kind of like staff, you know, there's my salary and then there's how much the city actually pays me versus the water and the sewer and the electric. City only pays me about 50,000. So that's the way it kind of breaks out in all the other projects. And so it when you look at the overall project, it's not general fund as in as impacted as it looks like. So.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's move to a roll call.
Mrs. Bishop?
Hi.
Ms. Quidnow?
Hi.
Mr. Fields?
Hi.
Ms. Kurler?
Hi.
Mr. Waters?
Hi.
Motion pass 5-0.
All right, thank you. Item C. Misty, can you read the resolution for Reed Street?
City of Lake Mills Resolution 21-45, condominium plant approval, Reed Street Condominium Association.
All right, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 21-45.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mrs., or excuse me, Mr. Fields, and a second by Mrs. Bishop. So any questions or comments? Did I say Mrs.? I said it right? Second time, right? Is there any question or comment here? Or is there any background on this?
It's getting to be kind of a standard condo plat. It's a change for financial reasons for financing, which I agree has been an issue for the the owners. Used to be that zero lot lines and duplexes were easy to finance, but they've become more complicated. So going to a condo association has made it easier for them to finance and move on. There were some small issues with, you know, what do you do in a two-person condo when they disagree? It's not like there are three of you and you can get a split vote. But that's really not the city's issue. I think there might have been some small technical details in the covenants, but I think we can work them out and then can get those all worked out. So from that standpoint, the staff is comfortable. Brian Karanza is online. So if you have any questions for the planner or the city attorney, they're both available. As far as I know, we've all recommended approval.
Any further questions or comment? Yes, Ms. Kurler?
It looks like Mr. Slate is online, so I don't know if any of us have questions for him. We could also ask him. But I contacted Steve, I noticed in the declaration document on page 12, under item 18.2, there's a reference to a septic system, which kind of caught me by surprise. And Steve said, no, that that's an error. So just would want to make sure that that document gets updated if we approve this tonight, just so that it's accurate.
Do we then amend?
Well, that I guess I would have a question. Do I need to actually make a motion to add that to the resolution? Or is that something that staff can take care of?
Any other questions? Or comment? All right, let's move to a roll call.
Ms. Quidnow?
Hi.
Mr. Fields?
Hi.
Ms. Kurler?
Hi.
Mr. Waters?
Hi.
Mrs. Bishop?
Hi.
Motion pass 5-0.
All right, thank you. Item D. This is a resolution on the sewer project. Misty, can you read that?
Resolution 21-46, Initial Resolution Authorizing $115,000 General Obligation Bonds For Sewerage Projects.
All right, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 21-46 regarding initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds for sewage projects.
I second.
All right, a motion by Ms. Kurler and a second by Ms. Quidnow. Any questions or discussion on Resolution 21-46? Or is there any background, I guess, on this? Oh, John's up at the at the mic right now. John, the floor is open.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Good evening. I'm John Cameron with Ellers. And really, the agenda items that you have before you, all the way down through Agenda Item H, go for the issuance of 1,865,000 of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2021A. Bonds in general are anything over 10 years in length, up to 20 years in length, under state statute. And when a municipality issues bonds, you're issuing the the bonds in total. The reason you have all these different resolutions is that you also have to authorize the different purposes for the bonds individually. So you've got the individual purposes for the bonds, and then you're authorizing us to proceed with causing the sale of the total general obligation bonds of the 1,865,000. So the the purpose for the bond issuance is for your 2021 street capital improvement projects, as well as projects that you are special assessing for. And in terms of that first resolution, the special assessment projects are are broken down between water, sewer, and road projects. The debt service in in total would be largely on the road project side, repaid with ad valorem property tax revenue. Anything that you're special assessing for would be repaid with special assessment revenue and would not be carried through the property tax levy. In terms of the authority for the bond issuance, these bonds are being issued as general obligation bonds. Municipalities in the state of Wisconsin are limited in terms of the amount of general obligation debt that they can issue. And that limit is no more than 5% of your total equalized value. So after the issuance of these bonds, the the total amount of general obligation debt outstanding will be approximately 19.7 million, which is approximately 62% of your geo-debt limit, leaving you with a little over $12 million of remaining general obligation debt capacity. In terms of the the term and the call feature, the debt is being issued for a term of 20 years. The principal on the bonds will start May 1, 2022, and run out through 2041. And you'll have semi-annual interest payments starting in 2022, all the way out through 2041 as well. The other feature that we are looking to add to this issue is a prepayment feature. The prepayment feature would allow the the city to either prepay the debt in in total, in terms of the remaining principal, starting on or after May 1 of 2030. Or it's hard to believe interest rates going any lower than they already are right now. But if for some reason they would, you'd be able to refinance that debt for interest rate savings anytime after that May 1 to 2030 time period as well. Some of the other highlights in terms of the debt issuance is, as part of the issuance, we will be seeking to have the the debt rated. There are two major rating agencies in the United States, Moody's and Standard and Poor's. The city has used Standard and Poor's as its rating agency. Currently, the general obligation debt has a AA- minus rating, which is a very solid credit rating. We will be, we've actually already reached out to Standard and Poor's to get the process started. So between now and the time that we actually go about the bond issuance itself in in early September, us, along with city staff, will go through the rating process. In terms of the the method of sale, what we're recommending with this is a competitive bond sale out in the open market. And that's really been the past history for the city in terms of at least general obligation debt and largely for for revenue bond debt as well. We feel that, you know, based on the projects that you're finding, these are financing, these are standard capital improvement projects, the city has a very solid these are standard capital improvement projects, the city has a very solid credit rating. There's not a story to tell where we'd want to bring in an individual underwriter and really work with them to to kind of tell the story here. With the general obligation bonds, we're looking to do this competitively in the open market and hoping for lots of bidders on the on the day of sale. So really, what will happen on sale day, so sale day is is lines up with your September seventh council meeting. We'll take bids in the morning. We usually take bids anywhere between nine and eleven AM, depending on on the total amount of sales we have that day. We allow bidders to submit their bids electronically. We have a bid time, just like you would where, you know, where you're opening a contract for construction, say, take bids at ten AM. This is advertised out in on our website, as well as in different national bond publications, so it's certainly well advertised. We'll tabulate those bids, and the underwriter really is bidding on two different things. They're bidding on the interest rate by maturity, and that gets locked on the day of sale. They're also bidding on what's called the underwriters' discount, which really is expressed in terms of number of dollars per thousand, based on the power amount of the of the bonds. And that really is their fee for purchasing the debt, and then they're turning around and and selling those bonds off in the secondary market. So, you know, the lowest underwriters' discount, the best interest rates, you know, by maturity is who, you know, ultimately wins the day from the underwriters' perspective. In terms of the the timeline that we're looking at, we're obviously here before you this evening, seeking the authorization to move forward with the sale. Like I said, there's there's a fair amount of work that gets done between now and the date of the the sale, which we're looking at, holding on September seventh, which would be the day after Labor Day. There's an official statement that gets prepared. The official statement really is the primary offering document for the bond sale. It tells potential underwriters really everything that they want to know from a financial standpoint in terms of information about the city. We're also getting the rating process going with Standard and Poor's and seeking the rating between now and then. So there's a fair amount of work between now and September seventh, and then the estimated closing date, which would really be the date that you'd have funds available, would be on or around September thirtieth. So that's kind of the the timeline that we're we're looking at here. The other items that are in your your packet in terms of the the pre-sale report is just a breakdown in terms of the total amount to be financed, as well as the total issuance expenses. Again, part of the issuance expense is that underwriters' discount, but in addition to that, there's other players that are involved, including us as the municipal advisor for the city, Corals and Brady, which is the city's bond council, and really, their role in the transaction is twofold. Number one, they're providing that opinion that the debt can be financed on a tax-exempt basis. They're also signing off that the debt is being issued, you know, the city has the lawful capability and general obligation debt capacity to actually issue the debt. The preliminary principal and interest payments schedules are also included in the packet, along with where we think, you know, preliminarily, the principal and interest payments will come in at primarily those those interest rates. Those are based on recent comparable sales with some buffer that's added for potential market movement. If you look at or have looked at the pre-sale report, particularly the last page of it, what you'll see is kind of a three-year trend in interest rates, and really, over the last, I'd say, month or so, in in early July, we saw a slight spike in interest rates, and they really have been coming down to kind of the historic low that we saw actually a year ago, last August. We're really right back at that point right now. So hopefully, that trend continues between now and September, and we're in a in a good position to to go ahead and and kind of seize the opportunity to borrow at very low interest rate levels. So I know that's kind of a lot to go through. I'll kind of pause right there, and I'm happy to answer, you know, any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron, thank you for being here tonight. This particular resolution is for sewer, which, as you know, the city charges fees for sewer usage. Why wouldn't this be a revenue bond?
That's part of the sewer portion is part of the piece that you're special assessing for. So again, with the bond resolutions, we're special assessing for a total dollar amount, but but we've got to break that down for resolution purpose into sewer, water, and then there's a portion that goes into the the street resolution here as well. Otherwise, we would be.
Yeah, that that's a situation where the Special Assessment Fund gets their money from the general fund or the GEO, and then the people who are assessed pay that fee. So it's it's a straight-through pass-through. That really doesn't hit the levy at all. It's just a... We don't do any other types of special assessments generally, except for new sidewalks. But when we do these types of construction projects for in the development zones, we we special assess all of it.
Yes.
Maybe this is just a follow-up then, but so the the this item and the next two items, those are all general obligation bonds, and then later, we have a revolution, a resolution for revenue bonds. So those would be for costs that are not special assessed, then? Is that how that gets differentiated?
Correct. The wa- the revenue bonds that we're talking about here a little later in the agenda are all for water utility projects that are non-assessable.
Okay.
Paid back through through water rates.
Any other questions? Or comment?
Those water ones that are going to be revenue bonds, we're not going out for sale on those. We're going directly to a a specific agent.
That's, yep, correct. I'll cover that with the next pre-sale report here.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Curler?
Just one more question, and maybe this applies more broadly, and I'm not sure if it's John or Betsy who to ask, but so year to year, do you evaluate, you know, interest rates, other conditions, to kind of come up with how you recommend financing our our capital improvement projects every year? So could it be different from year to year? Obviously, interest rates are very low right now, so borrowing makes sense, but is that something that you look at every year to kind of decide what's the best way to finance?
Generally, we're looking at, it's a large dollar amount that we're going to be borrowing. So we found that bonding, in most cases, is the the most economic for us. There are some situations where we, it's not, it's for more of a shorter term, so we do go for local borrowing, and that's where we will look at what the interest rates are at the the bank, what we can get from the state if we were to borrow through them. Those are some other options that we do look at, just to make sure. But on these larger, long-term borrowing, going bonding, either GEO or revenue, seems to be our best option.
We, we were, we were on a fast track to hitting seventy-five percent of our five percent. And we made a decision to only long-term bond, long-term projects, and we went with short-term borrowings for like equipment. So we generally look at the term of the the life of the project. So we don't borrow twenty years for a squad car, because we change those out in a couple of years. Same with a lot of the smaller pieces of equipment. So we we shorten that term up. So if you look at our trend in historical, we went up, and now we're coming down, and that's because we do a combination of short and long-term borrowing to make sure that everything matches up, and we we pull it down. The other the other advantages is, of course, that our assessed value is skyrocketing. So but the combination of that was in the part of the long-term plan to make sure that the combination of debt was coming down, not going up again. Now, that'll vary from year to year slightly, but you want to look at the long-term trend and see what's going on.
And I think to Betsy's point, I did see a promissory note that the council approved last year sometime, that that was for more of those short-term expenses. You wouldn't want to borrow a twenty-year bond for something that isn't going to last for twenty years. So, okay.
And we'll have one of those probably next council meeting.
Any other questions, comments? Yes, Mrs. Bishop.
I understand that this is not for, I think, four more resolutions, because it sounds like we're aggregating all of these three bonds into the one point eight million dollars. But what's the cost to issue those bonds for the one point eight?
The total cost of issuance is anticipated to be fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, and between now and the sale day, that'll certainly be tightened up a little bit, I would imagine.
Yeah.
I think this is for the city attorney. Let me look at the statute. So I was looking at a couple of statutes, Mr. Drescher, and it looks like the initial resolution doesn't have to go to electors. At what point does this go to the electors, or do we just give notice that we have passed these resolutions?
There is no requirement for these to go to referendum unless there's a petition put forward within the next number of days, right, John?
Correct, within the next thirty days, right.
Catherine, do you have a statute to cite on that?
I had a couple written down here, so I don't remember which applies. One was Wisconsin Statutes, Chapter thirty-two point sixty-nine, and I think that was the one which mentioned the electors. And if I can find the other one I had written down. No, that one didn't apply. So I think it's Chapter thirty-two point sixty-nine.
I would like to look into that. That's a pretty specific question. And as was disclosed earlier, I don't act as our bond attorney, so I may not know, but I I'd like to look into that question.
Okay, thank you.
Corals would have, and we have historically dealt with that question right out of the bat. So all these bonds would move forward without any referendum, unless there were some percentage of petition brought forward.
Right, yeah, there's there is the the essentially what you're you're noticing here is to the electors that they they have the ability over the the next thirty days to bring petition. If they do, if there's a certain number of signatures, it would force a a referendum on the on the bonds. It's rare. I'm not going to say it doesn't happen from time to time across the the state, but it's relatively rare.
So it sounds like the issue in the statute is it's a notice to the electors, and they have a certain time period. It's not a dollar threshold amount of bond issuance that would trigger.
Correct, for for cities, correct, yeah. If this was a township, it would be different, but for cities, yes.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Any other questions or comment? All right, Misty, let's do...
Mr. President, I just have one comment. I'm I'm having a difficult time here, not necessarily understanding the bonds, I think I get that, but in the overall picture of the city and in how we're spending our money. And so it's not that I don't want infrastructure, it's not that I don't want to get it funded and to do so quickly, because I do understand that we need to act. But I would like to see this in in the perspective of the budget for the city, especially moving forward next year, and because we are going to have a work session at the end of this month, I would like to motion to table this until the first date in September, which I think would only push us back a total month from getting the funds sold and then available. So that's the motion that I have, and because I want to see the bigger picture for the city in terms of budget.
So there's a motion on the to table, is there a second? Hearing none, I'll move forward with the roll call on Resolution twenty-one forty-six.
Thanks, Steve, I had a question.
Can I comment? This bond would be for last year's project, so this is money we spent this year already. Generally, we try to wait until the best time to issue the bond, so it's it's money that we've already spent in relation to last year's budget. It's not really for what's coming up into this year's budget. And I know that we've been using unreserved fund balance, and as we get low, Betsy would like to make sure that we have those funds coming in.
All right, roll call on Resolution twenty-one forty-six.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passed four to one with Mrs. Bishop voting no.
All right, thank you. Move forward to Item E, Resolution twenty-one forty-seven, which is a bond for street improvement projects. Misty, can you read that?
Resolution number twenty-one dash forty-seven, initial resolution authorizing one million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars general obligation bonds for street improvement projects.
All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution twenty-one four dash forty-seven.
I second.
All right, motion by Mr. Fields, second by Squidnow. Is there any history on the street improvement project? Or is it more of the same of what we just discussed?
It's pretty much the same as just discussed. It's going to be Oak Street.
Okay.
There are some else on main inside.
Any question or comment? Yes, Mrs. Curler?
Could you just clarify, this was, this is similar to the last item in that it's to cover costs from this current budget year, two thousand and twenty-one? Is that right, rather than next year?
Yeah, you're right, that's, so it's for Lake and Reed Street.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Bishop?
So if this is for a project for this current year, how are we currently paying for it?
Unreserved fund balance.
So how much money is in the unreserved fund balance?
It was listed in the audit, but it's generally about two million dollars, two to two and a half million dollars.
And so that money is not earmarked for anything else?
That's right. We use it. The GFOA, which is a Government Financers Officers Association, recommends you have a certain amount of unreserved fund balance to carry you through, because our revenue streams are so unusual. We have highs and lows, so like right now, we would be very low on our revenues, and so we depend on a couple of different things, but one would be the revenue bond. We also use that unreserved fund balance for shocks. So if we had some reason there, we had to spend a lot of money, tornadoes, destruction of a large piece of equipment, those types of things, we use unreserved fund balance to cover those. There's a lot of detail on on unreserved fund balance. In fact, some of those memos I wrote went into quite a bit of detail on unreserved fund balance and how they're used. But generally, we use unreserved fund balance to balance our cash flows, because we, general fund does not have a standard stream.
Did you follow up? You're good. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, let's move forward with a roll call vote on Resolution twenty-one forty-seven.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed four one with Mrs. Bishop voting no.
All right, thank you. Item F, Resolution twenty-one forty-six, this is for bonds for water system projects. Misty, can you read that?
Resolution number twenty-one dash forty-eight, initial resolution authorizing one hundred thousand dollars general obligation bonds for water system projects.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-one forty-eight regarding initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds for water system projects.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. I think the... All right, motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. I think there is a need for some background discussion on this, from what I heard in our earlier discussions, is that right?
Correct, yep. This is for the special assessment portion, water portion of the special assessment projects.
This one's, this one's similar to the sewerage one we talked about earlier. There'll be another one that's for water that is a revenue bond that paid differently.
Okay, I'm sorry. So that's item I, I expect on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on Resolution 2148?
I just have a quick question. I just want to make sure this, like the other ones, is covering what has already been done, or is this for something coming?
No, this is what's already been done. This is the special assessment portion of the Brookstone project. So the developer is paying this cost.
The developer is paying the $100,000?
Yes, we special assess him. So he pays all the costs related to this project. He's given a five-year time period. The last project he did in about three years.
So this will be returned to us by fees in 10, okay. So this is just to cover whatever needs to be taken care of, and then that will be returned to us? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, we install it, we pay for the installation, that's part of the original contract, and then he agrees to be special assessed. So we take all the costs associated with installing water, sewer and streets, all that, and he pays us an assessment per lot. He has five years to pay it, except that as lots sell, he has to pay the fee for the lot. And the last project, they sold the lots out in two and a half years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comment? Yes, Ms. Bishop?
So that agreement is in the development plan with this developer? Okay. And he hasn't missed a special assessment payment then? And that special assessment is not being passed in a way directly to the purchaser of the property to pay at a later date, because it's being paid at the sale of the property by the developer? I understand.
Mr. Wilkie, can you give verbal responses?
Yes, to all our questions. The one that was a little bit confusing, but the developer pays us, the, there are no additional special assessments passed on to the homeowner when they buy the lot. Technically, when the homeowner buys a lot, he's paying all the special assessments. I want to make sure that, yes, the homeowner eventually pays all the special assessments, but they don't get special assessed twice.
Yeah.
I guess if the developer is paying it anyway per his agreement, well, what I understood you saying is we're building it for him.
Yes.
But we're going to take out debt to pay it for him, or build it for him. And in the event, for whatever reason, that he doesn't pay it, and maybe I should have said this for the first resolution as a GO bond, we're using the full faith and credit of the government to certify and promise that we're going to pay this back. So we're taking out debt for something really a developer should be doing. And we, if for some reason that goes under, we would be taxing people to pay for it, for something that should have been done. By the time we have to pay this out in 20 years, it should have been done today. So I guess that's the issue I'm having with that structure. And that we would be promising under the GO bond to, because we're promising to pay it, to raise taxes to make that amount if for some reason something happens.
Well, we entered into that agreement, and so we do have somewhat of an obligation to follow through on it. We also have a lot of methods for collecting a special assessment. So it's not like it would end up on the levy for the promise. Special assessment is a pretty common method of raising funds within a municipality that eliminates the need for a levy. And so there are a lot of methods for being able to collect those funds. And we haven't historically had any problem with collecting special assessments at any level, even when we do it on the sidewalk level, at the residential property owners' level. And as far as this goes, they paid it back so fast that we haven't had any problem with the fiscal problems that would be associated with that.
Okay.
So any other follow-up? Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Curler?
I just had a follow-up out of curiosity, then. In that situation where the developer pays more quickly, are we then able to take advantage, I heard in this bond, one of these bonds, for example, that there's that prepayment, are we able to take advantage of that when we receive the funds earlier? The city receives the funds, the repayment earlier from the developer, then are we able to pay off that debt more quickly?
It depends on how the bond's structured. Generally, we have a time period where we can do that. In this case, what we did was is we borrowed less this time. We use that money to, because it was another project of a much larger scale, we used all the money that came in to not borrow the money. So if this was a million-dollar project, we took all the money that had already come in, and instead of paying it in on the debt, we used it to not borrow money this time.
Okay, so you're saying you don't, the city hasn't always taken on debt equivalent to the full amount of whatever the project costs are?
Right. We, the special assessment account has a balance in it, and we try and use that balance to reduce the amount of borrowing that we have to have. So as the money comes in, we use that to then lower the amount of debt that we borrow.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, let's move forward with a roll call on Resolution 21-48.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Quidnough?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-1 with Mrs. Bishop voting no.
All right, thank you. Resolution 2148, this is a notice to the electors. Misty, can you read that?
Resolution number 21-49, resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issues.
All right, can I have a motion?
I move, oh, I move to approve Resolution number 41 dash, or 21-49, directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issues.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Quidnough, second by Mrs. Bishop. So this is just basically to inform the electors that all this is happening, basically. Okay, any questions, comment? Mrs. Bishop?
To address the seeming incongruity in my votes here, even though I voted no on the last three resolutions, I will vote yes on this one because the electors should absolutely know. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Let's do a roll call on Resolution 2149.
Mrs. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Quidnough?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, thank you. Item H, Resolution 21-50. Misty, can you read that?
Resolution number 21-50, resolution providing for the sale of net-to-exceed $1,865,000 general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2021A.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 21-50, providing for sale of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2021A.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. All right, this falls in line with everything that we've been talking about before. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's do a roll call on Resolution 21-50.
Ms. Quidnough?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Motion passed 4-1 with Mrs. Bishop voting no.
All right, thank you. Moves us to Item I on the agenda, Resolution 21-51. Misty, can you read that?
Resolution number 21-51, resolution providing for the sale of approximately $715,000 sewerage system and light and water utility mortgage revenue bonds, Series 2021B.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 21-51, providing for the sale of approximately $715,000 sewerage system and light and water utility mortgage revenue bonds.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. So motion by Ms. Quidnough, second by Mr. Fields. John, so there's a little bit of history to go with this one?
Yes, okay. We've got a, in your packet, a pre-sale report for, specifically for this debt issuance. So this would be revenue bonds. In this case, the projects are for 2021 water utility system projects. Revenue bonds differ from general obligation debt in that they are backed by the revenues of your utilities. In this case, you have a joint pledge between water, electric and sewer. The water utility revenues would be the practical, you know, the actual payment source for the debt, but they're backed by the pledge of all three utilities compared to general obligation debt, which has that irrepealable property tax levy behind it. So revenue bonds, you know, general obligation debt from an issuance standpoint, from an underwriter standpoint, is considered to be the safest form of debt because it has that irrepealable property tax levy by it. Just above that is, you know, revenue bond debt, which is for public purpose, essential projects, but backed by the revenues of the, of the system. In the case of this debt issuance compared to the other one, what we're recommending with this in terms of the, the method of sale is to actually negotiate this with a specific underwriter, in this case Bankers Bank, which is out of Madison, Wisconsin. It's an underwriter that has worked with the city before, held some of the city's debt. It's also an underwriter that has essentially a good, you know, an underwriter for banks. So what we see, we see Bankers Bank bidding on a lot of bonds within the state of Wisconsin that we're the municipal advisor for, and in a lot of cases, they're bringing into their syndicate, the local bank, so that there's a, you know, a local presence in terms of the debt issuance itself, which is also a nice, nice feature. But the primary reason that we're looking to negotiate this versus doing a competitive sale like we would do on the general obligation side is, is primarily because of the size of the issue. So it's a smaller size issue. You know, there is a cost to go out into the open market. There's also a cost to get the debt rated. So on the general obligation side, we have that cost built into the issuance. So we talked about the, the question on the, the total cost of issuance. The rating fee is part of that cost of issuance. With a smaller size issue, those rating fee, or cost of issuance can become a larger proportionate cost of the total amount of the bonds. In this case, what we're looking at is to actually forego a rating to save on issuance-related expenses while still seeking the benefit of an underwriter who is very familiar with the city and familiar with the city's utilities. So this debt issuance, from a schedule standpoint, would follow the same schedule as the general obligation debt issuance. On the day of sale, instead of taking bids, we would do final pricing with the underwriter in terms of negotiating the, the final price for those interest rates by maturity, as well as the underwriter's discount, and then be back before you at the council meeting that evening with the, the final sale result.
So that's September 7th as well?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Any questions or comment? Yes, Mrs. Bishop?
I have a couple first for city staff. So this is for a project already underway for the water utility. And were those also being paid out of unreserved funds? Okay.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? Your computer died. What was that again? Paid out of utility, utility revenues, okay, thank you. I didn't hear that, Steve. Okay. Mrs. Bishop?
I do have some questions for Mr. Cameron. What is the cost for issuance of these bonds? Estimated, I guess?
$32,250.
And what is Eller's relationship with Bankers? Was it Midbank or Bankers Bank?
Bankers Bank. We don't, we have no relationship with Bankers Bank.
And so it sounds like they were chosen because they've worked with Lake Mills before? And is Eller's the sole decision-maker in that?
Um, no. To answer your first question, yes, they are somebody that has familiarity with the city. To answer your second question, no, we're not the sole decision-maker on that. The decision to work with a specific underwriter actually lies with the city. We'd make the recommendation based on the familiarity with the city and the fact that they're an underwriter that we see frequently and has dealt with many municipalities in addition to Lake Mills, but the decision lies with you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
Sure.
Any other questions or comment?
What?
Go ahead, Mrs. Bishop.
For city staff, possibly the city manager, what's the effect if we wait until the budget work session to discuss this again and get the full picture as opposed to deciding now?
Sure. Right now, we're paying it out of the, can you hear me? Right now, we're paying it out of the, the revenues in the water utility. So if we don't borrow the money for that, it is going to put an extra burden on the water utility. It is one, of the three utilities, that one is the one that is struggling the most with, you know, keeping up with, with its expenses. And there are a lot of expenses, we've seen a lot of expenses for our lead service line replacement. So you know that every time a service to a home is replaced, the city has to replace their side of it as well. So that's, that's a large expense, and it's really been depleting the funds that have been in our, in our water utility. So by not borrowing this money in order to, to fund these projects that are already underway and had been approved in the previous budget, it is going to put a burden on our water utility.
Any other questions?
No question. I have a follow-up statement. I do prefer that this is a revenue bond. I do not like that we are passing resolutions to issue bonds for work already underway. I don't think that that's good planning. And so I really do hope that we can do better this coming budget cycle to, if we need funds, to have money on hand at the appropriate time. So I will be voting yes on this issue.
Any other questions or comments? All right, before we vote, thank you, John, for spending your evening with us and providing excellent content. So appreciate, appreciate the effort and time.
Oh, absolutely. Nowhere else I'd rather be.
Great, that's what we like to hear. All right, roll call for Resolution 21-51.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnough?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, thank you. Item J, ordinance. Item J, ordinance. Twelve, where's my glasses? Ordinance 1226. Misty, can you read that?
Ordinance 1226, amending city code chapter one general provisions, article one adoption of code 1-14, changes in previously adopted ordinances, new ordinances. The city council of the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does hereby amend section 1-14, changes in previously adopted ordinances, new ordinances. Section one, section 1-14 sub B sub five is amended to replace the title Parks and Forestry Director with Facilities and Grounds Director as follows. Section 1-14 sub B sub five, Parks and Forestry Director, Parks Director, Parks and Forestry Director, and Director of Parks and Forestry are changed to Facilities and Grounds Director. Section two, this ordinance shall replace the title Parks and Forestry Director with Facilities and Grounds Director throughout the city code, including sections 1-14 sub B sub five, 10-3 sub B, 27-17 sub C and D, 27-36 sub G, 153-9 sub A, sub 1, 2, and 4, 271-2 sub 5, 271-4, 318-2 sub B sub 2, 445-13 sub C, 445-14, 445-15 sub B and C, 445-16 sub A, B, and F, 445-17, 479-6 sub A, 496-4 sub E, 496-5 sub C and E, 496-9, 496-10, 496-12 sub C, 496-14, 496-17 sub A and C, 496-20, 496-22, 512-1, 594-2, 650-22 sub C sub 5, 650-27 sub A sub 7, 650-33 sub F sub 1, 660-113 sub A sub 3 sub A, and 660-113 sub C sub 3 sub D. Section three, adoption of this ordinance has been sponsored by city council representative Catherine Bishop. Section four, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section five, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication.
Thank you, Misty. That was the, the first reading of ordinance 1226. I apologize, you're gonna have to do it two more times, but, but thank you.
Second and third time are just by title, so the worst is behind us.
Ah, great, thank you. So is there, uh... Does this need to be a motion or seconded at this point? How, how's that work?
At this point, you've conducted the first reading on it.
So we'll go through a second and third, and then we'll, we'll go through the approval at that point.
If there was a motion to suspend the rules and move on to the third reading, that would be conducted by a motion.
All right. So that was the first reading. We'll move on unless there's any other discussion.
Are we allowed to ask questions? This is a, really a housekeeping ordinance change, just changing the title of a director.
Good deal.
Okay. So I would make a motion that we suspend the rules to waive the second and third reading?
Second.
So there was a motion by Mrs. Curler and a second by Mrs. Bishop to suspend the second and third reading and move to an immediate vote. Is there any discussion or questions?
I, can I just ask a question maybe of Dan? If that motion's okay, we can just go to final vote, or if it should be a motion on the rules to go to the third reading?
To proceed to the third reading.
To proceed to the third reading.
Yeah, and then you actually conduct the third reading and then, correct, that's...
Okay.
So we need to amend that motion?
So you can't waive the second and third readings? That was my motion.
What you do is proceed to the third reading, and then we conduct the first, second, and third reading all in, in tonight, by skipping the second reading essentially.
Okay, so we waive the second reading and go to third reading this evening?
Correct.
Okay, so can I amend, may I amend my motion then?
That's my understanding of the motion. So I think what, what I heard is that we are moving to the third reading and voting.
Okay, okay. So I don't have to amend it. Okay.
We call that efficiency in, in economy, so thank you.
Is there any further questions or comments?
So then when we do the vote for this one, Dan, it would be just to move it to the third reading. I would then do the third reading, and then they could make a motion and second.
To adopt.
To adopt the ordinance, correct? I just want to be, make sure everybody understands what the, the vote will be on.
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comment? CNN, we're gonna move to a roll call vote on the amendment that was made to go, go bypass the second reading and move to the third yet tonight.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Can I go ahead and do the third reading at this time, Mr. Waters?
Please, thank you, Misty.
Ordinance 1226, amending city code chapter one general provisions, article one adoption of code 1-14, changes in previously adopted ordinances, new ordinances.
Can I have a motion to adapt?
I move to adopt ordinance 1226, amending the city code, changing Parks and Forestry Director to Facilities and Grounds Director.
A second.
All right, motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quinnow. Comment, discussion? CNN, roll call on the adaption.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item 10 on the agenda, recommendation for future agendas. Open for discussion?
I would be unable to make it. Sorry.
No, today's, today's the third.
It would be the 10th.
The 10th.
The 10th.
No, I cannot.
Can you have Public Works?
I got Public Works next week, Tuesday at 5:30. Or five o'clock, I'm sorry. Hopefully. Yeah, I'll be here, so I'm, I'm good. I'll be right here.
He got one. I can't make it either that day.
The 12th? I'll be out of town for work on the 12th. I'm open, I'm open.
The 19th is better.
I'm not hearing you.
The 19th.
The 19th.
Thursday, the 19th.
Nope, I'm sorry, I'm out of town from the 18th to the 28th for a trip that was planned before I was appointed to city council, so, sorry.
Could we do the 16th, or I think I heard somebody say early on the 17th, before the regular council meeting? Is that too onerous?
August 17th?
The 17th may be a long council meeting.
Oh, we have an executive session too, don't we?
There's a plan for a close session, yeah.
The 16th. How do people look Monday, the 16th?
Library board at 4:30, but I could do 5:30.
16th works for me.
At what time? I would not be able to stay very long. I have another, I have a teddy bear meeting I have to lead at 6:00. So after 7:00, I could, but... Okay, so we are going to do our budget meeting, training on the 16th at 7 o'clock, is that what I'm hearing? Okay. I will try not to, you may start without me.
Which Monday?
Probably sometime in September.
So would it be the second Monday to correlate with their meetings? Mondays are generally good for me. Okay, thank you.
I still can't hear you, Steve.
So we'll, we'll still be able to stream to the community? I'm gonna ask that we hold off on getting rid of 8x8 for, for maybe two months here, why this COVID spike is happening, and just make sure that, that we have that still available here for a while. But then after, hopefully after this peak, we can move on.
I have a follow-up question. Is there a cost associated with having 8x8? Okay, so the only purpose was just to be, to ensure that if people are going to be at a meeting, that they're physically here? Okay, I think some more questions might be, might be helpful to, so an, an extension of two months is a nice opportunity for us to reevaluate exactly how we would need to go moving forward.
All right, anything else there? Okay. Yes, Mrs. Bishop?
I have three quick things. The first with the budget study session, are we going to include impact fees in that? I would like to, so that's my recommendation. The second thing, but probably more important, is a resolution require notifying electors of the second revenue bond that we passed tonight, because that was not on the agenda, and I don't know if maybe one wasn't required. Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that, and if it was, I would support the resolution for the next time, but we're good. Okay, and then third thing is, um, we're an all-new council, which we know, and this is our first year working with the city manager, and so it's my recommendation that maybe in the next executive session, we have an informal review with the city manager. I think, you know, as employers, we owe that to somebody who's, you know, responsible for the city and to us before his formal review at the end of the year, just to, you know, see what concerns there are, if any, and to make sure that there's direction before the formal review happens.
Yeah, I was looking to do the formal review around the October time period after the budgeting process, so that we have that background information and can properly do that and, and work with Steve through that process. But that would be, that would be great. We can do that in, in the close session, yeah. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I, I support that idea. I think it's not really fair to Steve that we're not giving him any feedback, but we're also still getting familiar with working with him as well, so.
And he us.
Any other comments for future agenda items? Just taking notes here, all right. CNN, I will move for adjournment of this meeting. It is now 9:10. Thank you.